I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School District 115 Board of Education. May I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Snobla?
Here.
Mr. Edson?
Here.
Mr. Block? Mr. Scrivener?
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Ms. Golan? Here. Thank you. Well, for the President's Report tonight, I'm just going to take a few moments. This is very exciting. I want to introduce to our audience and to our community, our new Superintendent, Mr. Michael Simic. As you know, we went through a long process looking for this guy. Two years in the making. We went through all kinds of committee forums. We brought in the community. They gave us their input report over that information. We had interviews with, I think, fifty different people you met even before we decided. And Mike was the unanimous choice of everybody, and we are just thrilled. I was in a recent interview. I was asked about the other candidates, and I said we were brought some stellar candidates. It was, I mean, we were really impressed with the people that came forward. But in the end, we just knew we had a really good fit with Mike. So, welcome, Mike. And that will conclude the President's Report. With that, I will turn it over to the new guy, Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Golan, and thank you all for your kind applause. I think it'll be the last applause I get until I leave. So, a couple of observations from my first week in the district. Spent some time traveling the area. And I had two books I received as gifts on the area's history, but I'm still absolutely astonished at the natural beauty that is all around us. And obviously, some people did some forward-thinking a long time ago to preserve so many green areas and parks and bike paths and forests and, of course, the lake and so on. And it's just remarkably beautiful area to live and, obviously, to work as well. The board set a goal of developing and executing an entry plan, and I'm in the beginning phases of executing that plan. Spending time seeing the facilities and the people working in them at this time of the year, especially you spend time with the people who are repairing or preparing the facilities. This is, I think, especially important and interesting. Got a very good tour of two-by-two tile in the high school this week. Looks very nice. Got a very interesting tour of the kitchen facilities as well. It was a very interesting, amazing amount of work that you just don't consider that goes into making sure the food is hot and safe and all those other things. And somebody works really hard to do that. I particularly appreciated the time that our administrators and board members have already devoted to ensuring a smooth and efficient start for me. Also, my family and I feel very honored to have so many well-wishers welcoming us. And we have moved in, which as far as that word goes, moved is really kind of overstating it. It's really more kind of, everything is in a box somewhere, somewhere in the house. And happy to report that our movers, one of them wanted our hamster. And so, we no longer have a family hamster, which is a great loss to us. And that we have, in fact, found our silverware. That was a pretty exciting ordeal in the house. On a more serious note, our children, I have two in the high school, have begun activities in the district, and I look forward to their first day of school. I also especially look forward to working together with the community members, our community leaders, our staff, and our students to move the district from where it is to even better. And appreciate the chance to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. Next, we have public participation. And if the board members don't mind, I'd like to try something new with public participation. I received some information from our attorney, from our new Superintendent, from other board Presidents, that it's a better way to do it, and it fits within our board policy, is to have all public participation under this category here. Rather than in the past, when it was, if it was on the agenda, you had to wait until it was spoken about, and then you could chime in. Tonight, we're going to try it the other way. So, as I call for public participation, you can ask about or comment about anything you want. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to answer your questions or engage in conversation because frequently, we may not have all the information that you want. I may even say, "Very good question." But that is a really good presentation coming up later on the agenda, and so you're going to have to wait for it. But anyway, you're welcome to come up, introduce yourself, and speak up. So, with that, Mr. Pete?
Sounds like I don't need to introduce myself. My name is Gary Pete. I'm a resident of Lake Forest. I live at 515 Valley Road in the Ponds area. When I got here, I had a chance to review the agenda, and I noticed three items, and specific one in particular on the action items. And I apologize for my question now because my question may well be answered in the course of the evening. But since it's my only chance at the bite of the apple, I thought I better get up and say something now. The Ann Whipple contract, it's been a matter of some concern in the community in the past. It represents, I think, over $200,000 in expenditure for the school system, so it's not a minor item. And as many of you know, it was an item that arose in the last campaign for school board here in Lake Forest. I would be interested, and I think the community would be interested, in a review as to how that contract is to be decided, what alternatives were available, and why we think that's good value for our money. I appreciate the time. And welcome, Mr. Superintendent. It's good to see you here, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Hopefully, that your questions will be answered when we have a discussion. Those three items are, you know, just to clarify, those are service contracts, not employment. And so, when we get to those, if that's all right, hopefully, the presentation will answer your questions. You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question of the board or make a comment? As Mr. Pete did, if you would just say your name and give your address, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sheila Cavaleras. My address is 881 Timber Lane in Lake Forest. And you may, I apologize too, maybe you'll be getting to this in the action items. But some of us are just here to hear the results of the last board meeting regarding the Diamond Anniversary Campaign and what happened in the transition from what we thought was a memorandum of understanding, and it was going forward to now that we understand that it's unwinding. So, just really would like to hear the board's position on that and why we ended up where we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila, and thank you for your letter also.
Hi, my name's Patty Frain. I live at, currently, I live at 420 Northwestern Avenue. But for sixteen years, I was a neighbor of the East Side campus on Spruce. And I too am here tonight to hear about the Diamond Campaign and also to urge you to strongly reconsider, which we understand as you turning away this generous gift of the community. I think it's important that you understand why this gift is so important from a neighborhood standpoint and also from a student's standpoint and a parent's standpoint. Boy, this is, I think I can speak a lot louder than this microphone allows me to. My children grew up listening to football. They, we'd open our windows, and they would be like, "Mom, let's go watch so-and-so play." All the kids in the neighborhood that were older than them were playing sports. We could hear track being announced. We could hear, well, football, of course, is the big thing, but any sport that was going on in the East Side campus, my children heard. My daughter used to say to me, "All I want is to hear my name called. I want to hear my name called when my team goes to play for state in field hockey." Unfortunately, there's no way that's going to happen on the East Side unless we have The sport of field hockey is completely different than in the days that I used to play.
I apologize for that. It's not so much volume as it's for the cable television, correct? Too close?
It's too close? Okay. When I played field hockey in high school many, many years ago, way too many to ever tell you, I played without a mouth guard, I played without shin guards, and I played on grass. And, you know, that was okay then. But the game of field hockey specifically, and I could talk to you about the football field and I could talk to you about the track because my children have used that both on the East Side and the West Side. But field hockey today is played on turf. These girls sitting right here just got back today from a national club championship, played in Virginia Beach. This is the first time ever that a Lake Forest, that Lake Forest girls have ever qualified with their club to play as a club at a national level. They did great. They're sixth in the country. The game is played on turf. It's an extremely clunky, slow, laborious sport if you play it on grass. Field hockey, specifically just field hockey, again, I could talk about the other sports, has given these kids so many opportunities. If you look at the girls that have gone before my daughter and her friends, they're attending Stanford, Boston College, Pennsylvania, University of Pennsylvania. They're, they will be going to Michigan, they will be going to Colgate. And I'm sure many of you saw the article, the four-page spread in the Wall Street Journal maybe two months ago, that talked about how recruitable, how employable NCAA athletes are today. It behooves us to give these kids a chance to play in college. Yet, when they come off of our slow grass field, where they, where we cannot even host a state championship, and where our largest competitors are either getting turf or will have turf, Nutria, Loyola, Oak Park, Deerfield, they all, if they don't, will have turf very soon. So, we come off of this, and we come off of our season, and we do extremely well. I mean, we've been either one state or come second in state for many, many years. But they roll into their largest recruiting opportunity of the year, which is festival. It's at Thanksgiving, and they do poorly. Our team has done so poorly coming off of grass and then moving to a much faster turf surface. It takes them all winter long to kind of get back into the groove of playing on turf to then be able to compete at the next level. And when they go to Disney and they compete on a faster surface, they do extremely well because they've been practicing on it. This gift that we've given you, this extraordinary gift that all these very hard-working people, I've done almost nothing, all these people poured all this time and energy into, is a gift. It's a gift for our children that will last far beyond when my daughter graduates or her friend graduates graduate. The younger kids that are coming up today, they're learning how to play the game on turf. Field hockey, unlike football, is a sport that is played on turf today. Football can be played on grass or turf. It really, any other sport that we have at this high school, other than field hockey, you could say could be played on grass or turf. But yet, the one sport that is truly a turf sport today, we consistently say, "Play it on grass." The public sector, there's no question that the public sector has taken a much harder hit than the private sector. And yet, we've managed to raise all this wonderful money in this community to give back to our school and to our community. Please don't turn it away. Please give these kids a chance to help them to get recruited, help them to go to state and win state on our own field. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Patty. I hope you can stay for the report that we'll give later, and feel free, if you have any questions tomorrow, to call me, Mr. Simic or Mr. Albus. Yes?
Hi, my name's Bill Bunne. I live at 1062 Ainsley Avenue, and I'm on the Diamond Anniversary Executive Committee. I'm the Vice President of the Booster Board. And I don't know Patty. Don't know her at all. But she did bring up something that you should be aware of, is Title IX, 1972. I managed ABC Sports sales in the nineties. I worked for the Walt Disney Company right now for thirty years. So, your legal counsel should be aware of what Title IX is, which addresses what she talked about. So, just FYI on that one. I was a part of the campaign. I was the, I was, last August, to the new Superintendent, we had a coming-out party at the East School about these, about what we want to do and undertake for the community. And you, we're probably going to hear the numbers from you later on. Whatever the numbers you want to roll up and however you want to spin those numbers is not true. I'm well aware of what the numbers are. And in the end, it was a $1.7 million gift over the course of five years. You were going to finance this project over ten. You were going to have to come up with $1.2 million. I don't have a calculator, but the percentage is greatly in your favor. Turn down the gift because my understanding, being on the executive committee, is you wanted basically $850,000 cash in the first twelve and a half months of the five-year commitment. And we're talking pledges. Sharon, I think you're the only one that's on the executive, the board here, that donated to this cause. Not another board member ever did. And if, at least that's the last check that I checked the list. So, there was no commitment from any of you on the board. And you're all elected officials. Do you have any, by the way, how many have students here in the school district? Todd, you do? Right? I don't think too many other people do. I have three students that'll be in the high school. And what Patty said on these facilities, on the field for the, for the girls, the boys, every student at the high school and the middle school, we're going to be able to touch these facilities, not just the athletes, every student, every single student. The people in the arts, we're going to be able to play out there. Now, that, the track, you've been told by two different firms that the life expectancy on this track is about this long, two, maybe three years. I have a runner, and I can tell you, I've never been in a lawsuit. I'm fifty-eight years old. But if that runner would have slipped on the track in three years and blown out a knee, I think I'd find an attorney. Okay? I just want to tell you that I'm very disappointed in the board here, and I'm a very big supporter. Been on the booster board for many years, wanted to undertake this project with Brian Vanderburg and Ellen Funk to raise the money to give this gift of one-seven. Again, we've massaged the numbers multiple different times, and you turn your back at it. It's a pledge of five years. It's hard to understand how you would ask for half of the money upfront in the first twelve and a half months, when you were going to finance it over the course of ten years. I don't get that math. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bunne. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name's Jo Maki. I live at 48, excuse me, 48 Wilshire Road in Lake Forest. I have a daughter who is at the high school. I have a son who's at the middle school, and I have a daughter at Cherokee. So, I'll be around for a while. And I'm also on the booster board and have done a little more than like envelopes and have been a, you know, a supporter of this project. And I understand boards, I'm a teacher, and so I understand boards make, have to make decisions along the way for whatever reasons. And one of my questions is, going forward, if we are not going to have the field at the East Campus, is then what opportunities are there going to be available for our girls? And that, that be very seriously looked at and be addressed immediately, if not sooner, so that our girls are able to play on surfaces where they will continue to be competitive, not only for their, you know, future college careers, hopefully, which is the goal of, we have three of them here. We had ten girls from Lake Forest at this nationally, national tournament. Ten girls from our high school. That's unheard of. And so, yes, it does impact their future, but it also will impact the future of the sport in our school. And we will become, as a school, less competitive. And I know people say, "Well, it's a sport," and then, you know, it doesn't do whatever. I will tell you that keeping these kids active in sports, she's better in school during a sport than she is, you know, in that mid-season when we're a little, get a little lazy. So, it's a good thing for our community. It's a good thing for our kids. And we need to keep it in that focus, too, that it's good all around, not just for a few, for a lofty goal. But again, to reiterate what's going to happen, what's going, what steps are the board going to take? If we're taking away opportunity A, that this, these fields aren't going to happen, then what's going to be done to create equal opportunities? Because right now, it's not. But I think we all know that, so we can figure that out later. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Susan McMahon, and I live at 235 Basswood. And I love this school. We moved here about eight years ago from Maryland. And my, I have two athletes, one that's going to be a senior. So, my, my daughter may not see this, but I know how important the fields are for this school. I'm talking at it from a different aspect as to not only it being competitive, but for it being safe. I have a field hockey player and a lacrosse player that plays both, as do most of these girls here, too. And they just addressed the field hockey situation, but I'm going to address the lacrosse situation. My daughter got hurt freshman year tripping on a sprinkler head on the front lawn and was out for six weeks and worked very hard to come back. In addition, last year, we had a girl from Oak Park tear her ACL in front of the goal on a sprinkler head. She will no longer play field hockey or lacrosse at the level. She's from Maryland and moved here to Oak Park, and her athletic career is over. So, we are very lucky. The time when she got hurt, the referee had told her and came and told both our coaches that we better get the field fixed, or we will be in a situation with a lawsuit. They could easily come back and say that she was hurt because of an up-sprinkler head. On the other hand, I want to say, we have the most fabulous maintenance people at our school, and I'm not, I'm not saying that they did something wrong. I'm just saying that field was never intended to be playing a competitive sport as these girls are playing now, as it was twenty years ago. It's just a totally different game. At our event last year, we had the boys come in and talk, and the girls came in and talked at the Diamond Anniversary kickoff. Every boy that got up, Matt Wagner, Jason Handler, Ethan Ulmer, two of them, all of them, great athletes, great students, said they could not even imagine ever playing the game of lacrosse, not on turf. The boys have played on turf in lacrosse since they started, since the field came into being. The girls were, have never played on lacrosse until, lacrosse on any of those fields until this year, when they were given access, three games. That's it. No practice time, three games. It's not fair for the girls to be not playing on the fields when the boys are playing on the fields. So, I'm looking at it from, my daughter wears an ACL brace. She hurt her ACL on the front lawn her freshman year after she had sprained her ankle. So, I think we need to really look at the situation that it's not just competition, it's safety and it's protection of the school. This is a phenomenal school with phenomenal staff. I work closely with all of them. They're amazing. And we just felt like all the work that's been put in and the donors, my husband found many donors that were corporate people that didn't have anybody at the school. They have all reached out to him and said, "What's going on? Why are they not doing this? Why are we getting our money back?" There needs to be communication outside of the school to all the people who donated money that have no one at the school because people are very concerned as to why we would not be taking this money. And I just hope that you rethink this. I feel like since we've been working on it, there's, it's been a cat and mouse with, if we do this and you do this, then we'll do it. And we're saying one day we're doing it, and then we're saying one day we're not. And it will be very hard to find anybody to put the time in to raise this money in the future. I'm telling you, it will be next to impossible to find the people that we've found so far to find the money that has been made. Because I've been on the, the board at the Park and Rec for many, many years, and we never could raise any money to get turf field out to Route 60. It was all we could do. So, I just think we need to really think about this and not be hasty. And now that Mr. Simic is here and a different, you know, set of eyes, maybe we can reopen looking at, at taking these, these funds that we were given.
Thank you very much.
My name is Hallie Frain. I live at 420 Northwestern. And I am here just questioning, why isn't the turf fields happening with the boys' football and lacrosse being able to play on the turf at West Side? And the girls' soccer, I mean, I think that's just put in because of the Title IX thing. But for girls', field hockey and lacrosse to be set back on this front lawn turf, or I mean, grass field, they're just absolutely horrible. Like, when we go to the National Field Hockey and we talk to the girls that all live on the East Coast, they say, "You guys live on grass?" And we're like, "Yeah, it's, it's embarrassing that we do." It's like, it's such a setback to be playing on the grass rather than the turf. And to be playing on the turf in that stadium that needs to be repaired anyway, the bleachers could practically fall down, as what I understand, like, in the next year or so, or something like that. I mean, I just think that the turf fields need to happen for all the kids that are coming in and for all the people that are there now, just to have equal opportunities and to be able to take that pride of the most winning sport, field hockey, of state championships onto the turf field to take it to the next level because we haven't won in three years, which is like, last year was devastating, we didn't win. And without the turf fields, I feel that's next to impossible. So, I'm just wondering how this could be turned down when it's just been supported so much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to put a close to public participation now. I want to thank all of you who commented. First, I want to congratulate you girls on your, your big win. We're very proud of you, and you must be very excited for, see all, all your hard work come to pass that way. We do have a full report later, but I do want to mention one thing, and that is, maybe a window has closed, but the door has not closed. And we are still in conversation with the campaign people. I, I talk to Ellen probably twice a week. We talk to Brian every week. There's still work going on. So, nothing has been shut down, and I don't want you to think that. It's still an ongoing process, but there's a lot of legal and engineering and permits and bidding laws that we have to follow as well. So, again, window may have shut, but not the door, and we'll talk more about that later in the meeting. But thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. And next on the agenda, under Reports and Discussion, we have a brief liaison report about NSSED. And with that, I'll turn it over to Monte and to Dr. Julie Cooley.
Just as background, the NSSED has a goal for itself of restoring a fund balance, which today is somewhere in the five to six percent range, I believe. They'd like to get it up to fifteen percent. And to do that, they'd like to do two things. One is to change the way they bill member districts, and the second is to actually increase or have an assessment on member districts to restore that fund balance to fifteen percent over three years. I believe the total amount's somewhere in the seventy to seventy-five thousand dollar range. Julie, you've got the actual details there, so if you could just fill us in on that in some detail.
Yes, good evening, board members, and welcome, Mike. I'd like to welcome you to your first meeting as well. NSSED has been doing a number of things, as we know, we've been talking about it all year, related to the financial situation and trying to make it them more cost-effective and effective in other ways, too. So, this is a portion of the, of the activity that's gone on there. But they've had some instability to their cash flow, which I believe they're going to change, as you see in the to change, as you see in the first bullet there, just by adjusting the billing cycle. So, they moved one up from August to July and another from December to November. So, I think that that's going to help their cash flow. But in addition to that, then, there's the reserves issue. And as they look at other co-ops, as they look at a variety of districts, the amount of, that each district keeps in reserves varies quite a bit. So, they, through committee and through some initial discussions, they arrived at the possibility of looking at somewhere between 15% to 18%. They do have over $5 million now, about 5.5, which is about 12.5%, I'm told, of their, of the, in reserves. But they're targeting about 16.5%, which would put them up over $7 million. To us, yes, Monte, it was, it would be a total of about $79,000. We look at our neighboring districts, it'd be another $130,000, $135,000. So, for our community, it, it runs up to about $200,000. So, I think it is important discussion to have. Things aren't settled yet. First of all, the actual target is, is still up for discussion, and then, because there is another option. The option is, NSSED's concern is if they were to have an emergency. And the type of emergency I'm told they're worried about is perhaps a lack of state funding, which we've all experienced. But in NSSED, that's a very large chunk in terms of the personnel reimbursement. All of their personnel are eligible for reimbursement. So, if something like that were to happen, perhaps a different kind of mechanism could kick in, where member districts then would, would try to assist. So, there still are options on the table. It's critical right now for any questions to come forward, because Monte, hopefully, will be able to go back to their August meeting. They don't meet in September. So, in August, some decision could be made by the 18 board members that are present. And absent some discussion, NSSED frequently passes the things that go forward, so we could be without options unless, again, I think it just bears discussing. I discussed this with Jennifer Hermes, who's been quite involved. I sit on their finance committee, but I'll bring things back and run it by her and run it by Ellen. And what we're feeling like is the best course of action right now would be to defer the decision longer, rather, definitely not vote in August, which they may say, you know, "Let's have a discussion in August," or if the discussion is such that they all agree, they'll say, "Well, why don't we just go ahead and vote?" Is really what they're, they're talking about doing. So, at least if they would hold off until October, so we could get some more information. Jennifer had shared with me that, you know, really looking at the level of risk is, is very important. So, if they say they wouldn't get their personnel reimbursement at, at the rate they currently get, well, let's go down and say, "What if you got it at 75%? Then what is that risk? And is that covered?" So, I think Jennifer has had some great thoughts on that, which I don't think are unreasonable to ask, just to slow the process down here a little bit. And, and that would be our recommendation to Monte as a voting member. We would, hopefully, District 67 and 65 would join. The three of 18 districts, they can't really, you know, carry the vote, kind of a thing, but perhaps our point of view would be of interest to others.
Board members, any, any questions?
Is the process you're referring to, Julie, one of the special assessment?
You know, the exact mechanism for us putting, putting the money forth, they're looking at either, for instance, our $79,000, we could put it, give that to them all in one year, or perhaps over three, if it came to that. So, it would be roughly $26,000 if we did it over three years. Exactly how that will happen, I think it will be a special assessment. I don't think it would come on their typical bill. That's yet to be determined.
And is, you know, our, our own goal is 10% reserves.
Correct.
Why do they feel they have to operate at 15% to 18%?
Initially, they were looking at 25%, believe it or not, and we said, "Well, how many districts here have a 25% reserve?" Of course, nobody. So, they've cut it back somewhat. I still think it's aggressive.
Yeah. Okay.
Other questions? Board members, would you like a copy? Can we get a copy of that emailed to us at your convenience?
I believe it went with the board packet, if I'm not mistaken, but we certainly can do that. And again, I, I believe that, you know, you know, I don't know, Monte, your individual opinion on that, but again, he, he takes our, our voice to that table.
Well, I, I would say any questions or comments, board members, maybe talk it over with Mr. Simic, and then Mr. Simic and, and Monte can get together on how to proceed with Julie's input. How's that? Thank you. Thank you, Monte. Next are our board committee reports. The first is Board Education Committee. Nikki?
The Education Committee has not met since our last meeting. We now have our meetings for the coming school year scheduled, and our first one is on Wednesday, September 5th, at 1:30 PM at East Campus.
Thank you, Nikki. Next, Board Operations. Todd?
The Board Operations Committee has also not met since the last meeting, and I believe we will be putting our schedule together for next year shortly.
All right. Thank you very much. Board Finance, Jim Carey.
Since our last meeting.
All right. Those meetings will be online probably by the end of August, so. All right. Action item. The first is the approval of the Whipple Consulting Contract. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan. Before the board is the approval of the Whipple Consulting Contract, address a couple items that, that I see being of interest. And Mr. Pete, if you'd care to discuss this with me in person after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you further about that. Couple items related to this, I find tremendous value in Mrs. Whipple's services, in particular, her connection to all parts of our community, and communities, I should say, 24/7, on-call for any number of things, whether she happens to be in, on the clock or not. She seems to always be on the clock and available. Her value is exemplified this past year and the various challenges that the districts faced. Our community has, places tremendous value on communication and effective communication in particular, for a variety of reasons. I find the, the money for value extremely high in Mrs. Whipple's case and recommend its approval.
Board members, any questions or comments about the contract?
I'd like to say that when a person is an independent contractor, as Ms. Whipple is, and in my own field I am as well, you kind of need to look at that person's value to you individually, independent of any other contracts that person may have with other clients. And so, I think reference was made to a total of $200,000. That's not really relevant to us here at District 115. We need to look at what we pay Ms. Whipple in her contract and whether the services she renders to us are worthy of that value. And in my opinion, they are, as she's basically on-call 24/7 and is indispensable in dealing with many of the communication issues that we, that we have with the public and with the, the press. So, that's just my perspective.
Thank you, Nikki. With that, I'd ask for a motion to approve the contract for Whipple Consulting.
I move that the Board of Education approve the Whipple Consulting Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Next is the approval of the EdTech Solutions Contract. Mr. Simic?
Thank you again, Mrs. Golan. Before the board is approval of the EdTech Solutions Contract. To be clear, this is a contract with Cornelius DeBose in attendance tonight, and I recommend its approval, in particular in light of the, the coming value that Mr. DeBose will add to the high school district. Some realignment of duties is, is occurring across the district, and in my initial interviews throughout the district, I've heard repeatedly the extraordinary value that Mr. DeBose delivers to the district, and I believe this is in the district's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? All right. May I have a motion to approve the EdTech Solutions Contract?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Last is the approval of, the next one is the approval of the Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract. Mr. Simic?
Thank you again, Mrs. Golan. Before the board is approval of Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract. Serves a variety of connections, provides a variety of connections between our district and varying parts of our community, and I recommend its approval.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. Any questions or comments, board members? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract?
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the Kathleen O'Hara Consulting Contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. I, I would like to point out on those last three items again, that I think there was some confusion last month, because these are not employment, these are service contracts and to be discussed open meeting and not in executive session, which we are very careful to do. All three contracts were up at the end of June, and since these people showed up the next day to work, it was important that they had a contract, and we don't meet in August. So, this is the best, timeliest way to handle this matter. So, thank you. Next on our list is the approval of the 2012-2013 Staff Compensation. Do you want to do that? Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan, and I'm going to refer this to Mr. Albus.
Staff compensation was presented in June and discussed at the board and then reviewed again tonight in closed session. The recommendation is to approve as presented.
We've had lengthy discussion about this in executive session, but board members, do you have any questions or comments at this time? May I have a motion to approve the 2012-13 Staff Compensation?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. I have this visual of that movie where the train was going and they couldn't, was that speed? And it, they couldn't stop it. That's sort of how the district has been running, and Mr. Simic jumped in to, to drive this runaway locomotive. So, he's, he's really, you're doing a great job here, having just started here with us tonight. Okay. Next is the adoption of the resolution to display the tentative budget for 2012-13. Mr. Simic?
Yes, and I'm going to, again, hand off the tentative budget to Ms., Mrs. Hermes.
School code is our 2012-2013 tentative budget. We do have, and it should have been at your, your place this evening, if not, Mrs. Verrett will get it to you, the required state form, which you can see, it looks like this. But we also do present a district format. It is in, it is still in draft format, but it's a little more clear and a little bit more concise. So, those should be available for your review. Based on the information that we know today, we feel very comfortable with the budget presented. Overall operating fund expenditures and revenues reflect a balanced budget while still meeting the crucial needs and expectation of both the educational programs and of our buildings. We will continue to monitor the economic conditions, and if needed, adjustments will be made. We are allowed to make adjustments to the tentative budget up to the date of budget adoption, which will be in September. If we need to make change after that point, we would also be able to make a budget amendment. The final budget will be presented to the board for approval on September 11th. There will be a public hearing also on September 11th for those that would like to comment or ask questions about the budget. So, before the board tonight, there is a resolution in your packet that will do three things. One, we'll authorize the budget to be placed on public display for a minimum of 30 days, actually be much more, since it'll be on display till at least September. Advertise the notice of the availability of the budget in your public newspaper, so we will put a black box type of advertisement in the paper saying, "Come in and take a look." And three, it does set the date of September 11th for the budget hearing, at which we will do a formal presentation with PowerPoint and a lot more detail prior to the adoption item. Are there any questions regarding the tentative budget?
Questions or comments, board members?
Since our teachers are currently negotiating a new contract, said another way, they're operating right now without a contract for the current year, how have you factored that into your thinking for the budget?
Well, we, we leave our window open with the tentative budget and the ability to make changes, so we come in with some reasonable expectations or assumptions, just like we do with, what is the state going to do? What are we going to see as some local revenues are still in flux? So, just like many items in the budget, we kind of make an estimate or projection, and if we need to make adjustments, then we can do so prior to September or any time thereafter through a budget amendment process.
Since we're talking about it, where did we end up with the state insofar as money's owed to us for the last fiscal year?
I guess I would look at it, good news, bad news. The good news is, is they low, owe us less money than they owed us at the end of last year. The bad news is, they still owe us money. So, they did close the gap, I think, last year. I don't want to quote the exact number, but they, they are on time with two of their payments. They're behind two full payments, but it is less outstanding June 30th of this year than it was June 30th of last year.
And since we've got an audience, what does two payments delayed mean?
Anywhere from $350,000 to probably half a million dollars.
Katie has already calculated that, but we just don't recall it off the top of her head. She's given that to us, but it's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
So, it's ugly, but not as ugly, is what you're saying?
That's exactly right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I do want to thank the powers that be for putting this budget together. I know it's a lot of work, a lot of detail, and I would not have the patience to do it. So, all right. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution to display the tentative budget for 2012-13?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to place the tentative budget on display for a minimum of 30 days prior to final action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. And next on the agenda is the rejection of the East Campus construction bids. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan, and Mr. Albus has been working extraordinarily hard on this, and I'm going to hand it over to him.
On May 23rd, the Board of Education authorized the release of construction bids for the Diamond Anniversary East Campus project. The scope of the project included the installation of a synthetic turf field and the replacement of the existing six-lane track with an eight-lane track, as well as the removal of the existing bleachers and storage areas. The total project was estimated to cost approximately $2.9 million. In May, the Diamond Anniversary campaign representatives committed $1.7 million towards the project, including $700,000 in 2012 and a million dollars plus financing interest pledged over the next 10 years. And as Mr. Bund talked about, the committee had, had desired to pay that off in five years, but we decided to finance it over 10 to give a buffer in case pledges came up short in any given year. Final Board of Education approval was subject to the bids being within budget and the execution of a written agreement between the district and Diamond Anniversary campaign reps formalizing the terms of the project. Since mid-May, staff has communicated with representatives to discuss construction schedules, projected financing costs, final bids, and a written agreement relative to the project. Bids were opened on June 12th and were approximately $20,000 under the projected budget. As a result, a Board of Education meeting was scheduled for June 19th, and there were several action items at that meeting. One was to approve the construction bids. One was to approve a construction management contract to oversee the construction. One was to approve a funding issuance through William Blair, and the final action was to approve a written agreement with the Diamond Anniversary campaign representatives. A few days prior to the June 19th board meeting, campaign representatives requested a substantial reduction in the amount of money to in the amount of money to be contributed in 2012. The initial contribution proposed in May was $700,000. Several days before the scheduled board meeting, there was a request to lower that to $350,000. There were numerous conversations following that and a couple other concerns. One was a change in a commitment to fund preliminary engineering costs. And we simply, as President Golin said, ran out of time with the construction window. The, the concerns resulted in the difficult but necessary decision that it would not be good financial stewardship to initiate the project at this time. Therefore, tonight, staff is recommending that you reject the bids that were received on June 12th. The Diamond Campaign has brought increased awareness to the fact that the existing track is nearing the end of its useful life, and a variety of options are currently being considered, including storage replacement and bleacher demolition possibly occurring this fall or winter to really prep the site, because going to the eight-lane track, the footprint of the track encroached on the existing bleachers. And they're old and dilapidated. We need, we need to address those anyway. So, one of the options being considered is moving forward this fall or winter with the storage replacement and bleacher demolition, which then would pave the way for a track potentially being replaced in 2013. All of these options will be reviewed with the Operations and Finance Committees this fall before being presented to the board for consideration. And as President Golin said, the door is always open. We've partnered on many things in the past with the Boosters. If we could work something out, that would be great. We have the engineering plans all ready to go. But as said earlier, the, the window on construction simply closed without, we would have been in a situation of interfering with the startup of school.
And as I understand it, when, when the terms of the agreement were changed, that would require us to rebid the project. We couldn't just cut the project in half or change it at our will. We have, we either have to take it as is and we couldn't make the changes that were suggested to us without bidding again, correct?
There was a conversation about could we move forward with doing simply a field now? And the cost, the big cost on this project isn't the carpet, the field or the track surface. It's all the stormwater management that gets buried in the ground underneath. So to move forward on simply a field would require some reengineering work. But what that really triggered was a new application to the EPA for the stormwater management. And that takes at least 30 days. So when we sat down, because now we were at about the start of July, that was going to take a week or two at least to get the engineering done. Then you're going to apply for a permit and you're into mid-August. And that's when we had the conversations with the construction management company on that site, which is a very small high school site, to try and move dirt at that time with the tractors and the trucks involved. When you have 1,700 kids come back, just logistically would not work.
We would have to close down the student parking lot. We would have to stop all wellness classes outside for the fall. And we would have to stop all after-school activities, actually on the front lawn and on the side because of the construction. So it was a huge negative impact time-wise. And that was the window that closed, but not the door, if you understand what I mean. Board members, questions, comments on this?
I guess I have a question, not having been part of the discussions with the, with the Booster Club. But you mentioned the, the door is still open. What, what would it take to have this go forward, say, next year? What, from a financial commitment standpoint and from assurance that if the school were to finance the, the proposal that was originally put together, that in fact, the $1.7 million from the Boosters Club would be forthcoming?
Okay. I'm sorry, you're out of order. Let me, let's have Mr. Albus, do you have any? We, we have been given another proposal from the Diamond Anniversary people, and that would be to continue fundraising this year and pay off, because they still owe us, they still owe, there's some bills to be paid, as I understand. And continue fundraising and proceed in next summer, starting up in late spring.
Right.
That's the latest proposal from them.
Correct. This has not been vetted through the Finance Committee or the Operations Committee. So I think you have to keep that in mind. But, correct, there was a prior written agreement around engineering costs, and there's, there's some outstanding bills on that currently. And I think moving forward, it would be what the, the Finance Committee and ultimately the Operations Committee and Board are comfortable with as far as initial contribution and the length and, and quantity of the pledges. And so it's very hard to answer, you know, to, to say what that specific number is because of the way we operate through the committees.
Well, the goal of the Board would be to assure itself that the pledges could be met. And that, that's a sort of a key goal. At this point, that hadn't happened. Is that my understanding?
We had numerous discussions about attrition levels of pledges. We've looked at other projects. Elmhurst was cited to me as one where there was a pledge campaign that fell 20 or 30 percent short. I think Lake Zurich was another one that was cited that fell short. And so that's part of the discussion is, is what should be factored in as an attrition factor? Because people get transferred, you know, situations change. And, and a lot of times, the, the completion percent on the donations is not 100 percent. So that would be part of the discussion.
Mr. Carey, did you want to add anything to the, since you've put so much time into this this summer?
When the project, boy. Okay. I think it's just off.
Yeah, what was the original number, did you call?
I think initially it was viewed as a $3 million project.
No, the initial.
2.5 million last April was what the, what the campaign proposed.
Right.
Right.
Totally funded by the campaign.
Totally funded by the campaign, 2.5.
Let's, let's stipulate, the month, the numbers moved a lot throughout the course of this, somewhat because of scope, somewhat because of all the stormwater work, et cetera, and other things that you wouldn't really think in terms of requirements to put in a new field or a new track, like a storage facility. So there were a lot of things that crept up during the course of this. But, you know, from the get-go, you know, the idea of the project is wonderful. The question was, promises, pledges are not cash. When we get to the point where we're actually having to make a determination of do we go or not go, we need to be comfortable with a level of cash on hand, the level of pledges that are out there, the quality of those pledges, what kind of allowance for falloff for the reasons that Alan spoke of. That continued to be an item of a lot of discussion all the way up until the very latest meetings, in terms of how much cash was really in hand and what kind of pledges could be collected on quickly to give the board comfort that we ought to go out and raise this, because ultimately, we're on the hook for it. So, well, again, there was, you know, certainly a lot of appreciation for the efforts of the Boosters to do this. But so much time was spent trying to figure out, how much did you really have that you could commit to the project upfront? And most of you were, well, none of you were in meetings with us. It was two members of the Diamond Campaign. That basically, the opportunity, the window to get the work done, closed. So, you know, hopefully, we can continue this, work together in a positive effort. But basically, we've lost the opportunity for the current year.
So I've been asked several times why the Board reversed its decision to go ahead with it and why we've rejected this gift. And I'd just like to sort of put on record that we never did officially decide to go ahead. It was subject to a number of conditions, my understanding. And we haven't rejected anything, to my knowledge. And if we can continue to work on it, it'd be a great thing to have happen.
I, I'll allow a question. I know this is important, but I'd like the, the timing to be, you know, if you could keep it to a two-minute question or comment. And also, again, I can't guarantee an answer because we don't have all the paperwork in front of us. But yes, Mr. Bund, if you have a question you'd like. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Give me just a few more minutes. I'd like the Board to finish with their questions and comments. Todd, did you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to some of the statements that have been made here tonight. And I'd start by saying that, Mr. Bund, you're correct. I am a father of a, a young field hockey player. She's not yet a high school athlete, but she certainly looks forward to being one. We spent two weekends ago, I spent standing on the sidelines of turf fields in St. Louis, where on the field, the temperatures were about 120 degrees. And these girls were playing a game that I didn't even recognize compared to what I've seen played up here. So I'll, I'll grant you that the, the game of field hockey is a far more exciting game to watch. It seems like a much more competitive game to play and, and better all-around played on turf fields. That said, I think that where we've come from since last April, when an extraordinarily generous offer was made to raise $2.5 million to install two turf fields and replace our track, and the process migrated throughout the year to, we could use some input, financial input from the district, between $500,000 and $700,000 as a show of commitment, skin in the game, to what we ultimately were faced with, which is a scaled-back project of about $2.9 million. One turf field, replacement of the track with the campaign funding, Mr. Bund, 59 percent. Certainly, a, a majority of the cost. The outcome of the campaign, I think, is not one that any of us hoped for. Several of us worked very hard on helping to draft the agreement, trying to figure out what was there. I think that the unfortunate thing is that the promise of the campaign just never materialized. There's a tremendous amount of generosity in the community. The, the dollars that needed to be there to fully support this project and the booster, the campaign commitment to the project were not something that the campaign could provide evidence of to us. So it is wholly irresponsible for us to take on debt on behalf of a third-party organization with the expectation that that organization will repay that debt when it has no ability to secure it or to show any evidence of its ability to repay it. It's a little bit hard for me to, to believe that in a, in a repayment period that will range from five to 10 years, that it will be possible to maintain the necessary enthusiasm to generate the level of pledges necessary to fill the gap. And so it's, it's disappointing. I think it was a remarkably ambitious project or proposal. It was extraordinarily generous, and it's one that I hope that we can continue to work with the Boosters on. I, I say that as a father of a, of a budding athlete and as a board member. But at the moment, not only is the, the window closed on the time to, to allow the work to get done before the school year, but the, the necessary assets of the, of the giver just weren't there. So in other words, the, the, there was an effort being made to give a gift that didn't exist, that, that the giver didn't have to give.
Thank you, Todd. Well said. Nikki?
In my opinion, it's not the responsibility, well, the responsibility of our school district to both our taxpayers and our students is not to provide state-of-the-art athletic facilities. If we're able to accomplish those, that's terrific. And that was what we hoped the Diamond Campaign would be able to do. That turned out to be based on some assumptions that didn't really hold true. In my opinion, though, in, in this matter anyway, our big responsibilities are the safety of our students. And it sounds like with both field hockey and lacrosse and track, we have some safety issues. The second thing I'm very concerned about is equal opportunities for our female athletes. I'm very disturbed to hear, because I know nothing about field hockey or lacrosse, that you are at a tremendous disadvantage, so much so that you're playing a different game than your opponents who normally play on, on turf fields. That's of great concern, and I think it's something that we need to look at in terms of overall student use of our facilities and what, what the boys are doing and what the girls are doing. In an ideal world, I think, of course, we would want to have a turf field for lacrosse and, and field hockey. If that turns out not to be possible, I think we need to look at the use of our current facilities and see if there's a way to make things more equitable.
Thank you, Nikki. Anyone else at this time?
I'd just like to reiterate what, what Nikki said. I think, you know, we, many of the schools that were referenced earlier are just now in the process of getting their first turf fields. We've had a turf field here for five years now. And that there isn't a way for the girls to, especially given how, how, I'm sorry? That's the point I'm getting to, thank you. I think that, that in the meantime, we won't have a turf field on, on East Campus by this fall. It's just the way it is. That, that there is not a way to provide some accommodation to these girls who are playing at such a high level and achieving so much in their sport. It, it is a shame, and, and I think we ought to work on figuring out a, out a way to get them on that field, if that would be an appropriate surface for them to play on.
Can I ask for a motion at this time? Oh, Mr. Bund, you had a comment you wanted to make?
It's an evergreen opportunity, because the student body changes 25 percent each year. So there's new parents coming in. Instead of looking at the glass half-empty, I'm looking at it as half-full. There's new people, there's a new revenue stream every year, 25 percent of the population. The other thing is, is it the chicken or the egg? Nutri-Rear School Board said, "We're, we need to improve our athletic facilities," and they approved $3 billion. They went back to the Booster Board and said, "Could you help us out?" The Booster Board said, "Yeah, we'll, we'll serve up a million dollars." So I believe, let's use math, that's 33 percent, all right? The Booster Board said the one night, "We can go back on the numbers till the cows come home." But it was a 2, 2.9 million latest proposal on the opportunity that we're, we're talking about. The Booster Board, the Diamond Anniversary Campaign said, "We'll give you 1/7 over five years, with 700,000 or 38 and a half percent in the first 12 months." 38 and a half percent. Now, when you buy a house today, you don't have to put 38 and a half percent down. If, if you would have had to do that, we wouldn't be in this financial difficulty we are right now, okay? So 38 and a half percent. That leaves, let me see, five, six, seven, $800,000 to be raised over four more years. Now, Mr. Carey, you were concerned about some of the people, the 400-plus people that had donated money or pledged money, and you were concerned that they would be good for their money. Now, I'd like to know who they were on the list, because you and I can give them a call and ask them if they're good for their money. I don't know. I know that the Walt Disney Company was willing to call, to share my bid. Now, do you think the Walt Disney Company, which is valued at $85 billion, is not good for their money? I'd like to ask you that. There's no answer to that one, okay? So I'm just telling you that this was, there's a lot of passionate people in this community and in this room that were willing to bust it to give you, to give the Board 1/7 over five years, with 700,000 in the first 12 months. That is a great commitment. That is a commitment of a lot of people rolling up their sleeves and doing a lot of work. And I was one of them with a lot of other people in this room and not in this room. And you went like this, you, you want it, the doors not closed. Well, it is closed, because there's a lot of people that are going to age out of it. And there's a lot of people in the community today that say, "Wow, lot of enthusiasm here. A lot of people got together, but no one was listening." Now, the reason why you'd have to shut the school down in the student parking lot this September, which I understand, because of the delays of the conversations that were going on. And if we would have moved with the $2.9 million project, when it was, it was agreed to in March and April from the Board and from smaller discussions, not on an overall macro level, the construction companies could have started digging June 1st after graduation. They would have probably been done mid-September. I'm just telling you that there's a lot of hard work, and you all appreciate that. But I can tell you going forward that there's going to be a lot of people saying, "We're pulling our money out. Our kids aren't going to be involved anymore. Let the other generations do it," which obviously are the evergreen opportunity.
Well, that might be one of the, I mean, that was one of my concerns, though, because if people are going to pull out in the first year, what's to keep them from pulling out in the second year or the third year when their students do graduate? I still think we have an opportunity here. The Diamond Campaign people have given us a completely different plan now that we are going to consider with them. This is what's been going on. We've been in talks with them, and things were getting tweaked back and forth. It continues to happen, and I regret that it couldn't happen now, but there are a lot of reasons why it couldn't, and I'm sure that Brian and Ellen can explain those to you. But we continue to work with them, and so at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to reject the East Campus construction bids.
I move that the Board of Education approve the rejection of East Campus construction bids.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the approval of the Human Resources Report. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan, and Jen will have that report for us right now.
Good evening, Board members. As you have probably already noticed in your packet, our Human Resources Report this month is brief. I am happy to say that's because we did a lot of hard work in the earlier months of this year, and so we are in a really good shape with our staffing. We do have a few positions that we are out there looking for, and we have some department chairs hard at work during their hot July days and some strong applicants in the mix, but we are in a very good shape with our staffing and are happy to be there. Additionally, I did want to share that over the course of June, we had five different Kessler teaching institutes occur, and in those five courses, we had over 100 opportunities for faculty members to participate in individual institutes. These were focused on a variety of topics, teaching strategies, a number of them on technology, as I have mentioned, and starting to look at using the iPad in our classrooms. So our teachers are excited. They're moving forward in individual ways. Cornelius has been working closely with department chairs, with Laura Grig and Andrea Wise, who have been excellent supporters of other faculty members in this work, and we're excited about what that's going to bring to our classrooms and our students for 2012 and '13. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Board members? All right, may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. Board members, is there anything on the consent agenda you would like removed at this time? All right, the consent agenda consists of the adoption of resolutions to update the bank signer information for Lake Forest Bank and Trust, for its Midwest and Northern Trust; B, the approval of financial report and schedule of checks written; C, the approval of minutes from a regular meeting from June 12th, 2012, and an executive meeting June 12th, 2012; also the disposal of audio recordings from March 9th, 2010, April 13th, 2010, May 11th, 2010, June 8th, 2010, and July 12th, 2010. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Snoblen?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. We had three FOIA, four FOIA requests this month, one from Lisa Black of the Chicago Tribune, another from Lisa Black of the Chicago Tribune, one from Gregory Moy, and one from Gloria Lopez. Are there any items that Board members would like to see on the agenda for future meetings? All right, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be Tuesday, September 11th, here in the West Campus Boardroom at 7:00 PM. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And I would, again, like to thank everybody who came tonight and offered their comments and suggestions, and feel free to call us. We will be continuing these discussions. And with that, meeting is adjourned. Stay cool.